I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for March 17th, 2020. Do you please call the roll?
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Denning.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here. We're going to operate on special call meeting protocol if you don't mind and dispense with the extras that we normally do like awards and recognitions. Do you have any comments tonight, Mr.?
I do, Mayor. I would like to request a late file of municipal order number 2020-48 to be added to your agenda.
Second.
Go, second by Perigin. Nash.
Nash.
Think I might not be able to hear down here, so y'all help me out. So, Denning and Perigin.
I enjoy yelling at you.
No, Nash.
This will be a good meeting.
Any comments? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
You're welcome. Approved the amendments for our regular meeting on March 3rd, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Perigin. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First item is municipal order 2020 number 40.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2020-45 for a right-of-way mowing contract from Affordable Lawn Care and Pressure Washing LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky in the amount of $54,482.40. So moved.
Second.
By Perigin, second by Nash. Mr. Maslow?
I've been encouraging my Public Works Director and my Parks Director to look at areas that we can outsource work, where we can be a little leaner and use our existing employees for other things. And mowing and pressure washing is one of those areas that we feel like we could save some money by outsourcing. And so Greg Meredith went out and got some quotes and bids from various people to look at mowing right-ways, basins all over town. It's roughly 32 acres of land that we have been maintaining every year for over a period of 42 weeks during mowing season. Grass is growing. I can't talk today. And so we got three bids on this, and the lowest bid came in with Affordable Lawn Care and Pressure Washing at $54,482. Again, the purpose behind this is to allow a redirection of existing operations personnel to work on more critical tasks around town. We have this contract ending on November 15th, 2020, and I'm sure we would probably, if it goes well, we would look at, probably try again next year. Greg is here if you have any questions, but we would like your approval to go ahead with this and outsource this work out to Affordable Lawn Care and Pressure Washing.
Any comments or questions? Yes, sir?
Do you have any idea what our cost would be?
It's probably one and a half times this, I would guess, with our fringe costs that we have now. When you think about putting a guy on a mower for three to four hours and our fringe costs we're up to now with our retirement, healthcare, it's a lot of money. So we feel like this is a cost savings. Greg, I don't know if you have the numbers with you, but do you have anything to add to that? We're for sure, we for sure know it's going to save us money.
Okay.
Compared to our personnel cost.
No, I don't have a ton to add to that other than, you know, we were kind of unsure about what the numbers would come back. When they came back this low, we did the calculations like Jeff said, and it's barely that we could meet even payroll plus retirement costs, the fringes, for our employees to do the same work. So that frees them up at the same price, you know, to do other work, particularly with storm sewer and preparation for storms, et cetera. So.
Other comments or questions?
About $40 an acre, Joe.
Trying to do more with less or more with the same headcount. So this is how, this is one way to do that.
Comments? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2020 number 41.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2020-36 for the purchase of an armored response vehicle for the police department from Linco Industries Incorporated of Pittsfield, Massachusetts in the amount of $243,643.50.
So moved.
Second.
By Nash, second by Perigin. Mr. Maslow?
We discussed this item a couple times in the past. It's the armored response vehicle that the police department is willing, is wanting to purchase. We did get a grant on this, and we went out for bid, and the bids, one bid came in under budget, and that's the Linco Industries for $243,643. That is the vendor that police is recommending that we go with for the purchase of this armored vehicle. And Chief Hawkins is here, Assistant Chief Harrell's here as well for questions on this item if you have any, but we're recommending the purchase from Linco Industries.
Comments, quick?
I want to see it.
You want to see it?
When it comes in.
You want to ride in it?
I want to ride in it.
Appreciate it.
I didn't know that was an option.
Yeah.
I'd like to drive it.
That I don't know. Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2020, 42.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application for Homeland Security Grant Funds related to the CBRNE Equipment Project through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the purchase of hazardous materials equipment for the fire department in an amount up to $29,064.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Denning. Mr. Maslow?
We would like to submit an application for this Homeland Security Grant for the Fire Department in the amount of $29,064. There is no match required. If we were to get this grant, we would use it for some hazmat equipment, respirators, air cylinders, all kinds of stuff. It's in your memo, in your packet. Nick Cook worked on this along with Fire Department Chief Staff, and Nick is here if you have any questions on this item.
Any comments?
Nick, about a million dollars or so of some of these grants that we get.
He's doing pretty good.
He does. Does really well. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2020, number 43.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application for Homeland Security Grant Funds related to the communications project through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security for the purchase of an uninterruptible power supply for the police department in an amount up to $100,633. So moved.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. Mr. Maslow?
This is another Homeland Security Grant application we would like to go after for the police department. This, again, is no match required, and this would be to replace the, what we call a UPS uninterruptible power supply at the Greenwood Fire Station. That station was built back in 2008. We put this in as a backup to our computer room and our dispatch center at police. And so this piece of equipment is going on around 12 years old now, and a lot of the parts becoming obsolete. And so we're going to be having more and more difficulty finding replacement parts. Again, what this does is when the power goes off, this thing kicks in until, and kind of holds things steady until power resumes or a generator kicks in and takes over, and it backs up the 911 center and also backs up everything over here at the Annex and IT Department. Nick is here, I guess, if you have any questions on the grant. Lynn is here, if you have any questions on the UPS system itself.
Questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2020, 44.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application for the 2020 Kentucky Waste Tire Crumb Rubber Tire Derived Products from Grant Program through the Kentucky Energy and Environment Cabinet in an amount up to $75,400 for the purchase of transportation for shredded rubber mulch at Roland Bland Park.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. Mr. Maslow?
Again, we like using other people's money, so we would like to submit for this Waste Tire Crumb Rubber Tire Derived Products Grant application from the Energy and Environmental Cabinet at the state level. There is a 25% match on this one, but this one would be used to do a pour-in-place playground surface down at Roland Bland Park that Brent Belcher's been looking at doing. We had kind of had this in CIP as a project, and if we get this money, this would take a big chunk of that project if we were to follow through with that project. So we're requesting your approval to do this, or submit this application. There is a map in your packet, it's kind of showing where we would put this, and kind of some pictures of what it would look like. It's that rubberized type surface that we did out at Preston Miller, at the outdoor workout facility, if you recall that last summer. So if you have any questions on this, Brent Belcher is here, as well as Nick on the grant side.
Comments, quick?
Mayor, I do have a question. Mr. Belcher? So obviously, this is good for the environment to find ways to repurpose things, but I just want to check in terms of the safety for kids, if there's any chemical residue from the tires, or if you could explain that part.
This would be a solid surface, and it would be a glued-down surface with, it actually has a, I'll call it a film over the top of it, and then it's painted. So the crumb rubber is actually on the subsurface, if that makes sense. It's not loose. It's not able to leave the premises outside of vandalism or something like that, but it's the spongy-type surface you would see on a, well, like Mr. Maslow said, on the outdoor fitness area. It's the same thing. It has buoyancy. It is pious. In other words, the water goes through it. It is needed for the inclusive nature, so that individuals in a wheelchair or limited mobility can have no barrier to reach a destination. That's why it's required for an inclusive playground.
Thank you so much.
Comments? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2020, number 45.
Municipal order authorizing the submission of an application for the 2020 Quality of Life Grant Program through the Christopher and Diana Reeve Foundation in an amount up to $23,848 for the purchase of playground equipment at Roland Bland Park.
So moved.
Perigin, second by Nash. Mr. Maslow?
I think this is a private foundation, is that correct, Nick? That we are going to apply to for this grant of $23,848. What we would, if we were to get this grant, this money, we would like to use it on a 12-foot ramp for the park we're trying to do at Roland Bland, the all-inclusive playground, and install that. It's an adaptive glider, along with that ramp that we would use with this money. Again, this would tie into the pour-and-play surface at Roland Bland that we just talked about. Brent's here again, questions? Nick?
For you young people out here that don't know, Christopher is one of our former supermen. Did y'all know that?
But you were, Joe.
I was close.
I just want to thank city staff for pursuing grants like this. One of the things that I think I've always been most proud of the city of Bowling Green about is the Special Populations Program that the Parks and Recreation Department puts on. Many people beyond Parks and Recreation that still work for the city are invested into. And I can tell you, the mayor and Commissioner Perigin and I, not too long ago, attended a meeting at a group called, or a program called Hive, and the individuals, the members, as they call them, who attend that program are, one of the things I heard over and over again is, we're looking for things to do. We're looking for ways to be involved and to be social and to have opportunities for that. And the park that we talked about before and this particular grant that we're pursuing are ways that we can do that. And I think the best way that any community represents themselves is the way that we take care of or provide opportunities for people who otherwise can't provide opportunities for themselves. So thank you to city staff, specifically Parks and Recreation, and to Nick, who I know does the work on these and searches out these opportunities on a regular basis for doing it for what some might consider off-the-radar type of grant opportunities. I appreciate it very much.
Other comments? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2020, 46.
Municipal order approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the Second Amendment to the motorcycle lease agreement with Motorsports of Bowling Green Incorporated to extend the lease term to February 28th, 2022, for the lease of four standard police package Harley-Davidson motorcycles for the sum of $1 each.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Denning. Mr. Maslow?
Do y'all know, we've been doing this for getting motorcycles from Harley-Davidson through the Martin family for 16 years now. It's hard to believe it's been 16 years, but what we're proposing here is, the four motorcycles that we have right now, we're coming to the end of the two-year lease with them, and they would like for us to just go ahead and keep them for an additional two years. They're in great shape. We've got all our equipment on them, and so this is just an extension of that for two more years. Would terminate on February 28th of '22, and we would just keep the same four bikes we have, that we're very happy to have for $1 per year. And Chief Hawkins is here, if you have any questions.
Questions?
I'd rather drive those than the enclosed vehicle.
You don't get to ride those either. Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2020, number five, for preliminary vote.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning two tracts of land containing 1.22 acres from HI Heavy Industrial and RM4 Multi-Family Residential to HB Highway Business located at 701 and 711 Boat Landing Road, presently owned by Mugat Ram Incorporated. First reading, non-binding.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. First reading for a rezoning on Boat Landing Road is recommended by the Planning Commission with the unanimous vote. Those present, any comments or questions?
Where are they planning to put their?
Convenience store.
One on both cars.
I had a question, just for Ben. Mr. Peterson. One of the community members that spoke had asked to have a follow-up conversation with the developers, and I heard the chairman speak to, you know, hoping that conversation happened. So I'm just checking back in. Were there further conversations, and is everything okay at this point?
No idea. I do know that they spoke at the back of the room after that case was closed at the Planning Commission, but I'm not aware of if that further conversation has happened or not.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
One question to the city manager, if I may.
Sure.
Jeff, I know that we talked a little bit about this outside of the meeting, but I also wanted to mention, because I've been contacted by several people about it, the cow mural that exists in this particular location will be torn down as the convenience store takes place. And they are disassembling the cow mural to take it elsewhere, but many people would like to keep it within the community. Is there any place within the community, whether it be related to parks or not, that this mural could be used? Could we, and out-of-the-box thought I had, is there the possibility of attaching it to the heart? I don't know what we're calling that building over there now, the Little League Baseball Building. I know we have some complicated issues related to that, but are there places that we could put this mural to preserve it inside the city of Bowling Green?
Well, the last I heard that there were some private entities discussing taking it on, but we could look at some possibilities. I haven't really taken it to that extent. We could look at some places around town. I'd have to get with Brent, Greg, and Brent and some other people, if you all desire that. I don't know how we go about, are they willing to give it to the city, or do you know, or...
As by understanding, there were all volunteers that were going to take it down, and people wanted it to remain in the city. I don't believe any, no point in any discussion I've been in has there been a discussion of money exchanging hands. More about, is there a building in Bowling Green that could accommodate this to literally just attach it to the existing building that's there as opposed to building a new structure? And I know we have several still steel buildings that are...
Yes. The last I read in the newspaper was that, I don't want to name the name, but a business on Nashville Road was still interested in trying to figure out a way to take it on.
Okay.
That's kind of the last word I got on it, but I can, we're willing to look at it if you all feel strongly we want to have it somewhere in the city.
Any support for that?
Somebody else mentioned Chaney's Dairy Barn because of the cows. Oh, did I just say that?
Spoiler alert.
All right.
And if a private entity is willing, my goal is, if, I like more than one plan. I like a contingency plan. So if A doesn't work, is there, and I guess what Jeff is looking for is a consensus here, is there at least consensus in exploring a location on city property that this could be erected? Because I don't even know if we have buildings that it can be done.
Have we?
I don't know the dimensions of it, so...
I don't have no problem looking into it.
Depends where. I don't want it in front of City Hall.
I want it in, you know, I think about places like Raven. You know, there's a steel building on Raven that sits on Veterans Memorial. I don't know how long that is. I've not gone out and put a tape to anything myself.
That's your time, Matt. Yeah, okay.
But, you know, there's, I'm looking for things like that. I'm not looking for us to go build a park or build a structure that...
But at the underpass where they were covering up some spray painting.
Sure. Use it as a fencing.
I don't want it in the way if somebody else has...
I don't want to get in the way of a private entity doing...
We would be the last option.
We would be the last option.
It's metal vertical sheeting, right, that can come apart and be...
Yes.
Put back together.
Yes.
Okay. We'll look into it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Has that anything to do with their zoning issue?
Well, it only had to do with, the zoning issue is going to result in it being torn down.
So let's call the roll.
Oh, sorry, I have one more to clarify. So it's not just convenience store, right? It's a gas pump and a liquor store as well?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to check, make sure.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal order 2020, number 47.
Municipal order approving a job development incentive program, employee withholdings credit agreement with Crown Cork and Seal USA Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Perigin. Mr. Maslow?
Any of you were at the groundbreaking ceremony for Crown Cork and Seal a week or so ago. This is a really great project that we were able to bring to Bowling Green, Warren County. The city is going to participate in job development incentive credits for this project, and I'm going to ask Katie Schaller Ward to come up and present this to you, the details.
This particular project would create 126 new jobs and would have $147.5 million capital investment. And our 1% credit over a 10-year period would provide the company back about $705,000, and we'd retain about $599,000 of that. So it's a wonderful, as Jeff said, it's a wonderful project. Wages, I believe, are over $20 on average per position, so it's a great benefit for us to be able to have.
Please call the roll.
Perigin.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes, and for our late file item, municipal order 2020, number 48.
Municipal order authorizing the city manager and designated city staff to modify personnel policies and procedures related to the current coronavirus situation.
So moved.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. Mr. Maslow?
Mayor, I'd like to make, just to try to keep this brief, make a few comments, kind of get everybody kind of up to speed on where we've been. It's, the last seven days have really been a whirlwind. Since our first coronavirus meeting last Tuesday that was put together by some healthcare providers, government representatives, school representatives, university officials, we met last Tuesday and decided that we would have a daily call to update everyone on what, everything going on in our area. And the city was designated, Kim Lancaster was designated as the main social media outlet that she would put city, put everything on the city's social media to dispense information out to the public. And so all of, everyone in this group takes tweets and posts that Kim puts out from the meetings of this daily call and retweets them, reposts them, and so disperses all over the community to try to get what's going on out. So every day, we have a 1:00 call that Kim and I get on and listen in and report what we know. And so as of today, at 1:00, there were no cases still confirmed as positive coronavirus cases in our Tin County area. And just a minute, I'll let Matt from our Health Department speak just for a second to give you a brief overview and an update from his point of view, too. But I have met with senior managers last week, once the schools announced their closing. We knew we had to get together and start making some tentative plans on how we're going to operate, make some minor changes and tweaks to how we serve the public. We are prepared to do various things in that order. We have another meeting scheduled for in the morning to outline even further some details of what we discuss here tonight and decide on with this municipal order. As of now, we plan to keep operating the city, providing services to the extent that we're allowed to provide them in the safest way possible, wearing protective equipment if necessary. Fortunately, and I'd like to thank Commissioner Denning on this, but fortunately, we already have a lot of physical barriers in place in a lot of our facilities with the glass that we put up at service counters, whether it be just downstairs at Hope's Desk, the customer service counter you walk into, in the lobby of City Hall, we have it, we have the city manager's office glazed off, we have finance treasury counter, on and on and on, Section 8, public housing, even building in electric division permits, that's glassed. Police Department, I think Fire, you have to buzz into headquarters, admin building to get in. And so we have a lot of physical barriers already in place, thank goodness, so we can, we have, we're kind of ahead of the game in managing this. So we are encouraging everyone, employees, to follow the prescribed measures of washing their hands, keeping a good distance away from people, eliminating large gatherings. We've already canceled some city-sponsored events that were coming up, and we're encouraging everyone to check the covid19.ky.gov website on a regular basis to stay up to date. What I'm coming to you with today is, I feel like I have not probably been the greatest on keeping my employees up to speed on what we're doing. on keeping my employees up to speed on what we're doing. Uh, I feel like I've kind of somewhat been in limbo. I've been trying to watch the, the, the federal press conferences, the governor's press conferences, uh, attend, or listening in on the one o'clock, uh, calls every day, trying to keep up to speed on what's going on, staying ahead of the game, um, and trying to wait for the next move. And so what I think the next move is though, what I'm going, coming to you tonight with, is I'm asking for your authority to variate from any policies and procedures that we currently have pertaining to our personnel manual. And that involves operations, that involves staffing levels, that involves, if we get to it, uh, if people have to be quarantined, uh, or with family members, being able to work from home, uh, having flexible work hours, uh, whatever it takes to keep the city running, uh, to keep things as normal as possible. Uh, we, as the president said the other day, we're, we're kind of fighting an invisible enemy. And with this two-week lag and you don't know if you got it or not, it, it's, it's, it's something I've never seen before. And we're, we're in some crazy times right now and, uh, I just, I, I, I'm, I'm asking tonight if you guys would support this municipal order to allow me and my staff to, uh, carry on with things as, as normal as possible, uh, with, with some, some flexibility to, to bend some things in personnel manual when we need to. Uh, my main goal in the end is that there will not be anybody, uh, on leave without pay. They'll get paid somehow, some way, whether that be sick time, uh, an emergency leave type code time that we would, would go to if someone runs out of paid time that they cannot use. So, uh, I'll stop there and, uh, try to answer any questions you might have.
Slim?
I got five points that I'd like to go over, and this, this would be my preference. My preference is that all non-essential employees stop reporting to work beginning today. Uh, those employees can discuss with their department head, uh, if they fall into that classification, and that, and that, that discussion can happen over the phone. Uh, non-essential employees should be prepared to work during their normal work hours if, or if called upon. So even though non-essential employees would not be at work, and they would be at home, uh, it's much like telecommuting, similar. You need to be dressed and ready so that if somebody calls, you can, you can make a move. Uh, during the time that non-essential employees are not reporting to work, they will continue to be paid their normal wages. All unworked hours should be logged on a time card as emergency declaration, which the mayor has already signed yesterday. So there's the potential of recouping that money. That's number one. Uh, number two is essential employees will continue reporting to work. Uh, their work hours should be logged on a time card, uh, as they normally would. Um, any non-worked hours should be coded as emergency declaration than, than use of unpaid leave. So that if an essential employee can't be at work for some reason related to the coronavirus, then their, their hours are marked so that they can, we can still recoup money and those employees can be paid. Uh, city-owned buildings would close at the end of this meeting. Uh, and the fifth is that any employees would report any known exposure to the coronavirus immediately, so that if they are an essential employee, they can stop and somebody else can fulfill their essential responsibilities. There will be some who will say this is an overreaction. And I hope in two weeks, or two months, or six months, people make fun of me for this being an overreaction. That's my goal.
I had four. There's Slim.
All, uh, I'll, I'll read them off. All non-essential employees stop reporting to work today. Essential employees continue to work is number two, and then I talked about logging hours. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed three. Employees who can work from home should begin doing so today, tomorrow, when the workday starts. Again, all of that is in cooperation with and discussion with the supervisor that they have, so that who can work and who can't is deter, from home is determined. Uh, I appreciate Mr. Mizel having all the department heads here this evening. I'm confident you have other things you'd rather be doing. Uh, I wanted you to be here because I, I want you to hear what each member of the commission has to say about how we're taking care of you and the employees. This city doesn't run because the five of us show up. It doesn't run. It runs because we have dedicated public servants who come in every day, whether they work in HCD, whether they work in finance, whether they work in human resources, IT, police or fire. We, I have two roles when I serve on the city commission. One hat is I need to be responsible for what the taxpayers want done. The other role is I need to be responsible to city employees. And this to me is not an overreaction. I have sat on, in on the coronavirus conference call every day since I found out about it, which was last Thursday. Today I had a follow-up conversation, uh, with Dr. Shadoan. Uh, we can either not do these things and suffer, or we can make some different decisions right now, and people can one day point to the city of Bowling Green and say they know how to do it. And I want to be that kind of leader, and I believe that you all want to be that kind of leader. And so I do not see these as drastic changes. Jeff and I have talked on the phone about some of my other ideas, that if I spoke about them tonight, might seem drastic, would make these seem less drastic. And we may get there. Those are the kind of things that I think we need to be talking about, and we don't need to be waiting until they happen to talk about them. We need police officers who are on the street every day. We need firefighters who are still going to run into burning buildings and take care of people. And, and during this time, I believe that those people that are non-non-essential should be reduced so that we don't spread, because the only way we spread it is in contact with one another. If we ship the mayor, no, not the mayor, if we ship me to an island all by myself.
You do.
Coronavirus doesn't go anywhere, though.
[laughing]
And, and that's the kind of mentality I think that we have to have. That's the kind of mentality of the medical professionals are listening to, and I hope it's the kind of mentality that we will adopt at the city of Bowling Green. And, and, and I hear what Jeff says. I don't fault Jeff. You know, he was kind enough to say, maybe he could have done something different. I think Jeff's caught in the middle. Jeff's caught in the middle of answering to a political body and answering to, uh, the, the employees that he serves. But, and, and I want to give some very clear direction as one member of this board as to what I would like to see happen. And I want, and I think everybody in the room does, even if they don't agree with this, we value city employees. And if you are not feeling valued during this time, call me. Call Dana, call the mayor, call Sue, call Joe. I think every one of us values city employees. I think what we need to do right now is put our words into action, and I believe these five steps do it.
So you wanted to say something?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I think Slim has made some excellent points. Let me show you this list, the cities that have closed their front doors. And it's several. Frankfurt, Warren County, of course, our courthouse, Henderson, Hopkinsville, Wilmouth, Frankfurt. In other words, the front door is closed. Now, once the door is closed, what happens? I'm going to suggest that the city manager take a look at rotating shifts, uh, having people work from home, those that can. And pay them as to what they are to receive. we understand that groupings of 10 or less is dangerous. We also know that my age range is dangerous, so I don't want any of you touching me. Um, but we're put in a position that we've got to do something as a city. Whether it's like some other city or not, I don't care. I do care. And in the 26 years that I've been here, I care for our employees. And I always try to see and joke with many of them as I can, because I think they are my friends. And I have the responsibility as one of five to try to protect them. This is the time that we need to protect our employees. Whether our policies, uh, come together with meetings of our employees, well, there'd be 10 or more, uh, but we can email. But I get, I think that we ought to lock the door on City Hall. We don't have the numbers of people that come in our door like the county. The county has locked theirs. Then, as I said, let's do something to take care of our employees, as these cities on this list have. Um, those that can work from home, I have no problem with that. I have a granddaughter at home now, and she's working from home. Her job's in San Francisco. I would just like for you to consider those things, of course, along with Commissioner Nash's. I know it's a jungle thing that you, you, you're trying to see through, but my goal is our city employees first. The city of Bowling Green, from this meeting, at this point, uh, later, I would suggest to all of our churches, white and black churches, counsel all services for, for the next couple of weeks. I had a friend, doctor of mine, call me today, uh, where his patient was concerned about his church. He advised that patient to tell everybody at that church to not come. Do not have any services where there are 10 or more people. You do nothing but spread the opportunity, uh, for this virus. Uh, I remember Polio, wouldn't, wasn't, of course, in a position to do anything, but me, some in here may remember Polio. Let's do what is right and be in a position to change in order to take care of everybody. I do not take that lightly. I know our police and our fire department have got to be out there, but I want them protected too, to the best of their ability and our ability as, uh, city commissioners or their boss staff. Close the front door. I think that's number one. Taking care of our employees by letting those that can work from home, consideration of rotating shift, half-day shifts for some. I come in a half a day and you, somebody else come in a half a day. Anything to lessen the number of people that you are around. Though what I'm, what I've not, I made sense, but I hope some of the things that I've said are considered. I may have some later.
I don't disagree with either one of you all on, on, this is certainly unprecedented times, and we're, 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 as a community, a lot of people are coming together and doing a lot of things, and, and it's happening. Um, I think what Jeff is asking for here, I just want to clarify what, what this special called item is about, is for him to work in conjunction with city staff to be able to make adjustments to accommodate things like people working from home and things like, uh, shutting, shutting the front door here, which is not a bad idea. See, there's tents over here at, at the county courthouse for people to be able to, whatever they have to do over there. Um, but they do have a lot of walk-in traffic. And I think, am I correct, Jeff? Is that what you're asking for? Is the ability and the latitude to be able to make these tough decisions to protect our employees here at City Hall and, and all across the city, um, in, in ways that we don't have a code for?
Right. And, um, for, for the unfortunate one, employees that maybe only worked here a year or two and don't have much accrued sick time built up. They get quarantined for 14 days. They run out of sick time. Uh, we still need to take care of them and, and.
Can't have that.
See that they're, they're covered and paid. And so that, that's what, that's the kind of stuff I'm, I'm coming to you with, uh, when that happens. Um, I'll do whatever, I'll do whatever you all want me to do, but I need, I need a consensus. I, I can't, we got to play this correctly. So, um.
I, I would personally be in favor for you, for you working alongside city staff to be able to start implementing some of these. There, it's drastic, um, but what, what you think needs to be done.
There are, there are some positions that we can't work from home. There's, if, I don't, do you all really want to shut city annex down, shut city hall down?
Yes.
Where people can't pay taxes and can't.
Yes.
Get licenses and.
Yes.
Can't get building permits.
Yes.
Or electrical permits.
Yes.
I don't know.
Think for.
That's, that's what we're looking at.
We got to continue to do business.
So.
We got to continue to do business.
Would it be okay if I asked Mr. Hunt to come forward? I just have some questions in order to be able to form my response. Thank you for coming. Um, would you talk about why, uh, I guess everyone is responding so swiftly and so drastically, and what the, what the purpose is of that, and what, I guess, maybe the hope is if everyone acts drastically and swiftly?
Would you introduce yourself first, so everyone knows who you are?
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Matt Hunt. I serve as the director of the Barron River District Health Department. I appreciate this opportunity, and while it might seem like some of these strategies that you are discussing today might be drastic, but we are dealing with drastic times. And so the key in public health is to, uh, decrease the exposure.
Close to the mic. There you go.
Just didn't want to touch it, Commissioner. Sorry about that.
[laughing]
But you forced me to.
I'm sorry.
You're in now.
You have to go.
Hey, I'm in now, right?
You, you do, you need to go home for 14 days.
Okay. Yes, sir. Uh, but some of the strategies you all mentioned today, I, I wouldn't call those drastic, you know, uh, six weeks ago, we might call these drastic measures. But the key is to limit exposure, and it was great seeing everyone spread apart today. I admit, it is awkward coming to meetings, not being able to shake hands, not being able to have those conversations, but it is good that everyone's spread out and we have distance. Uh, we are being very flexible with our staffing at the Health Department, and the key. We are being very flexible with our staffing at the Health Department, and the key to this is, is to limit that exposure. And I'm sure you all have heard about lowering the curve. When you think about a bell curve, you do not want that peak to be very high. I know Jeff has been on the call, as well as Kim, on our COVID-19 coronavirus calls every day, and we talk about lowering that exposure, we talk about lowering that bell curve. And so, if we can lower that curve and not have huge spikes, because we want to meet the healthcare needs of the community, and if everyone's getting sick at the same time, that's very difficult, not only for Bowling Green, Warren County, that's difficult for our entire region. And so, some of these measures today, I think, are spot on. I know just from our agency, we're working atypical work hours. Some folks, instead of coming in at 8:00 to 4:30, they might come in at 12:00 and, you know, leave at 8:00, and things like that. And I do support you, Mr. Mizel. I think you need the latitude to make those decisions with city government, because it's very difficult. And once you start determining what essential services are from nonessential, it's difficult, and you all need some latitude to make those decisions, because it is unprecedented times. But again, the key is to keep the community safe.
Much.
Thanks.
Well, let me ask one, sir. The comments that you've heard so far, help us to put those in an area or thought that we all can consider, the points that each one of us have made. What do you like or think about some of those?
I think that, I will answer that based on my situation at the Health Department, serving eight counties. And so, right now, our call to action is very high, and so we have had several employees, myself included, working 14, 15-hour days for a few weeks now, because we are an essential service, and we want to do that. We want to be here for the community. I think it's very difficult just to completely shut down city government, but we want to keep that exposure down too. So I don't know what avenues you all have that available at your disposal, if it's phone calls, paying bills online, you know, paying for bills, getting permits online, over the phone, things of that nature to keep government going. I think that is key, and I know for us, we're really limiting the traffic in each of our eight counties going forward. Most of the business that we're conducting right now, if we have an avenue to do so, we're doing so online or over the phone. And I'm not sure what all platforms you all have for the city, but I know that's key for us to keep the business going every day. Yeah, we're a local agency, but we have a lot of stuff we have to do and we want to do, but I don't know, do you all have the capability to do a lot of that remotely? I guess A, and B, from a phone, or C, from online services. But the things you all mentioned, I think, are spot on. It's just how are you going to carry out the functions of daily, you know, daily business if most of the workforce aren't here? And so, what we're doing, again, my background was in HR, I've been in healthcare administration now for, I guess, 15 years, and so I know where Mr. Mizel's coming from. It's very difficult when you've got staff that do one thing, and it's what they're hired to do, but you need them to do something else now, because we're in an emergent situation. And so, I do support Mr. Mizel on that, is need some flexibility, have to shuffle folks around. Does that help, Commissioner?
Thank you. I appreciate you.
So, for me, the most important thing right now is to follow the directives that we have from the experts at the federal and state and local public health professionals. And what I'm hearing is that we must act swiftly and as, you know, as quickly as we can, and keep this social distancing as a top priority. And so, I do think that it means we might have to get creative, like Mr. Hunt just mentioned, about how do we possibly, as quickly as we can, move some of these services online or be flexible around payment, when bills are due, things like that. But I do, I just support everything that folks have said about wanting to immediately make it to where folks can work from home, do not come in, because right now, right, we're just talking about, okay, for the next two weeks, let's be as drastic as we can to reduce the amount of exposure that we can for these next two weeks. And so, instead of us thinking of, are we going to stop services for months on end, which means, I think, if we have that pad on, we might hold back some because we can't maybe go over that long of a period. But I feel like if we put on a two, what can we do for two weeks, as drastic as we can, and then reevaluate from there? I think it's really important to have that immediacy and that urgency in this moment to be as quickly, get our employees in a place where they can be safe. And then, the other sort of level to that too, is I think it's important to think about the extenuating circumstances that our employees are in. They are city employees, public servants, but they're also human beings, and they're also parents. And so, now they're trying to juggle with school being out, taking care of their children, and, you know, if they do come in contact with someone or someone in their family is quarantined, I think it's incredibly important that during this unusual, just surreal time, that folks don't have to give up any sick leave to be able to be there for their family. Because both in my own personal life, there have been situations that I could not have imagined happen to loved ones, and I know as a staff family, we have had staff members who, things have happened to their family that they could not have imagined, and it exhausted all of their leave time for a regular personal health issue. And so, I would not want this coronavirus situation to exhaust anyone's sick leave, and then when this is over, and something happens in their personal life, and someone gets sick, their child gets sick, their spouse gets sick, they get sick, then because of this situation that we're in, that's so unique that they have lost all of that. So I would not, I would see that as taking away from our employees if we force them to use their personal sick leave during this extraordinary moment. I think we need to give our employees, to pay them, no matter what, with the emphasis on, everyone just needs to be able to follow directives coming down from public health officials to be able to stay as isolated as possible for the time being. So I guess I need some clarity around the language being used around, yes, we want all of our employees to be paid, but they're going to have to exhaust all their sick leave. I would not be in support of using, making our employees use any sick leave time, because I think that puts in a barrier for our employee of saying, do I want to take some of this sick leave? And when I, would be best for my coworkers if I did, but then I might need it, so maybe I won't. I don't want anyone to be having any doubts at all whatsoever for them to do the thing that's going to keep them safe, their family safe, and their coworkers safe. So for me, having any barrier for someone to have to think through, is this worth me taking leave time, especially for employees that need to be at home to be with their kids who are not in school? I would like to see us not requiring any leave time and being super flexible in terms of working from home, using online technology. You know, my hope is that this does force us to advance some technologies and new ways of doing things that we didn't have to before. So maybe this could be a way, if we don't already provide ways for people to pay their bills online or sign up for things online, that this helps us figure that out. But I hope that we act swiftly and with as much flexibility and as most generosity so that we empower our employees to be safe and keep their families safe and keep their
My position is a little bit different in that when we close, other people's close. When other people close, then that magnifies more of the issues that come on, even if it's somebody trying to get a building permit so he can keep his workers employed and paid so that they can take care of their bills and so forth, whether it's somebody filing for Section 8 or whatever other items they have. When we close the doors, then that service is not available to them. And again, I commend, like you said, Joe, being ahead of his time and trying to protect city employees through the glass petitions that we have. What I take away from the briefings that we hear, the national and state press conferences that are held, is that the desire is to make sure that people are safe, but my understanding is also that you're around the same people all the time, that it's, that you're comfortable with that and relatively safe with the same group over and over again. I know the 10 limit is an issue, and we violate that in here tonight, spreading out the best we can. But I think what Jeff is asking for is the freedom to craft a response to how to do this, and quite honestly, and this isn't a criticism, we're struggling with the right response. How do we decide what is critical, what isn't? Do we continue business, but we don't? I think it's easy to say we just close the doors and walk away for, you know, two to four weeks or whatever it is, but in doing that, the ripple effects throughout other people's lives are, I think, as critical as the other side of the issue, which I agree with as well. But if you're looking for guidance, I'm willing to go for what you asked for so that you can craft the appropriate response, but still keep the city running, city business, municipal government needs to run. If we're not, if we're not necessary, let's de-incorporate, you know? If it's, we got stuff we knew how to do, let's do it.
I don't think anybody's suggesting that we're not necessary.
I'm just using the same hyperbole that we've heard here tonight, but the deal is is that, you know, if we're, you know, I think there are a lot of things, like Parks and Rec is closed up. There's a lot of maintenance, repair, cleaning issues that they can do that are not exposed to the general public. You know, the people paying their taxes or asking for a permit are protected behind the glass. People expect the city to serve them, and if we close up, we can't serve them, and that's, that's my frustration there. I understand your point, and I agree that...
Well, I said, nonessential employees, and maybe that's what we need to have...
That's going to be the hard choice, is...
Well, I realize that. I mean, if I can ask a question of our CFO, what happens if we don't collect a tax payment that was due on March the 18th until April the 1st? If we're going to talk in hyperbole, tell me about the calamity that's going to occur because we didn't collect it on the day it was due.
Obviously, we don't always get payment on the day it's due. Majority of folks do pay. We are approaching our quarterly withholdings filing deadline in April, and I understand we may extend some of those deadlines, as the federal government may also extend their deadlines for the IRS filings. We have to collect money in order to pay our bills, so if we want to continue to pay our employees, which I agree wholeheartedly with, then we need to have revenue coming in to do that. We need to be able to record that revenue, we need to be able to process those checks, get those deposits made into the bank. We have a great deal of phone calls, businesses in town wanting to know what they need to do, so we are fielding a lot of those phone calls. We are utilizing the petitions that we have available, so particularly in the annex, all of the individuals that work there have either their own office or are already spaced more than 10 feet apart and can work, and then we've got petitions for if the public were to come in. We're doing everything we can, obviously, to keep the doors open in that we need to continue to process receiving revenue to continue to pay our bills. We'll have several debt payments coming up in the next couple of months. We will need to be able to make those payments on time. We don't want to be hit with any penalties. So when we talk about essential personnel, obviously, there are some folks, and in particular in the finance department, that don't necessarily need to report daily. And we can work some things around where, as was mentioned, we can do some alternate schedules. We've already set up for some essential personnel that even in the situation where they have no childcare and they have to work from home, we've made arrangements for that already. And I know all the other departments have been thinking about that as well. But revenue is a key in making sure that we can continue to pay everyone until the point at which we could get reimbursed under the state of emergency if that were possible. We need to track all of those expenditures that do happen. We will postpone bid openings, that kind of thing, you know, we'll stop some major things, but we do need to keep collecting our revenues and recording in order to continue to pay our bills as we move forward.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So if...
One thing for you here, on reimbursements, this is a unique situation. I don't know what those reimbursements will be. In the past, you're reimbursed for expenses that are made in regard to the disaster that has occurred. So if we have overtime expenditures, then that could be reimbursed, products and supplies, then that would be reimbursed. I don't know if it would, it may, but I don't, it would, it has not been done in the past to pay for employees who don't come to work, but when you talk about reimbursement, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So if we just try to act swiftly and shut down while we can right now, where everyone is asking everyone to do as much as possible to isolate themselves in the next 10 days, you're saying that in 10 days, we're going to run out of money and we're not going to be able to pay our bills?
I'm not going to say we're going to run out of money, but we need to continue to process those revenues that are coming in so that we, in the long term, can continue...
But we have enough money to float the next 10 days and then have the revenue that we missed for 10 days? We've got enough money in the bank for 10 days?
I believe that we do. We do have cash on hand.
And then, do we have a rainy day fund for emergency purposes like this?
We do have a reserve fund. It does take Board of Commissioner action to get into it, but we do have, we do have a rainy day fund that we put aside.
Then how many months could we get through on our rainy day fund?
I believe we could get up to three months on that, but that doesn't necessarily cover debt payments. It doesn't necessarily cover all of the expenditures that we may have. It should keep our payroll going, but it may not cover everything that's forthcoming here in June.
But in terms of, if we don't accept payments for the next 10 days, we won't be able to pay our employees, that's not true.
No, that's not what I was saying.
Oh, okay.
We can still process those, but I need personnel in order to continue to process payroll. I need personnel in order to continue to make deposits when we do have revenue coming in. I really would rather we don't have a bunch of checks sitting. We'd like to get those deposited in the bank as quickly as possible.
I understand.
Did you do those things with half of your employees there?
Yes, and as I've mentioned, we're already thinking about who doesn't necessarily need to report on a regular basis and how we can adjust hours. We've got several of our staff have come up with some ideas on how we can adjust work hours, some individuals that can work from home when it is possible. We do an AP check run every week. There are some options with that. We don't necessarily have to do it every week. We can use credit cards, we can use different things, but we have to still be able to monitor and still be able to process payments as they come due.
We have a box out front, so people can still make payments and never enter a building, never see a staff person?
Typically, that's for property tax, but absolutely, they can make a payment through the box we have. We also do already have online services for some of our payments that need to be made, so a property tax bill can be paid online. We have some miscellaneous items that can also be paid online. So there are some processes like that that are available online, but not everything we do is set up that way.
But where I ask about the box, and you said, yes, we have it, but typically, it's done for this.
It is, but it can be used for anything.
And I'm not arguing with you, and that's what I want to hear, is that we're not in typical times.
Right. It can be used for anything.
The last time this occurred was, for this country, was 1918 at this level. The last time this occurred was, for, for this country was 1918 at this level. So they didn't have online back then. I'm, I don't, my history doesn't even tell me whether or not they had regular mail service back then that didn't come on a horse. I don't know. What I do know is that what I'm looking for, what I want to give direction to Jeff on, so he doesn't feel like he's caught in between a rock and a hard place, is that we define what the essential services are and that we then move forward. But we may have a debate on what the essential services are because if we don't collect taxes for 10 days, that doesn't mean for those 10 days, those people got the pass and the, and, and the person on day 11 has to pay. The revenue is going to come in. If we're as financially solid as we say we have been, then we're able to withstand periods of time where revenue isn't coming in or is low or however we want to say it. I believe we're that financially solid. I read your finance reports, and I believe that, that these are the kinds of things that we need to make right now so that the city of Bowling Green does not suffer in ways that other communities have, who maybe didn't make the decisions at all or didn't make them soon enough. It just, so I'm, I'm looking at you, but that's only because I called you up to say nothing, I don't believe, and I want you to tell me if I'm wrong, that if we stop finance for 10 days, what's going to happen?
If we stop finance for 10 days as of tonight.
Yep.
People would not get paid on Friday.
Okay.
So we need to process payroll.
We need some essential people to process payroll.
Correct.
That's essential.
We would need essential. Yep.
Vendors would not get paid.
And the person doing payroll and the person doing vendors be the same person? I don't know.
No. We have some separation of duty, some internal controls where certain things cannot be done by the same people. But still, would only take a limited number of folks.
And either one of tho, are either one of those done by computer? And can they be done from a place other than finance?
Some can. We, we cannot write checks outside of the office, but we can do electronic payment, obviously ACH. Payroll is mostly direct deposit, so that can be done from outside of the office. The collecting the revenues can't quite be done from somewhere else in that we're processing the mail daily, and those checks that we're receiving in the mail need to be processed.
Separation there too, so it can't be one of the other two that we talked about?
Correct.
So we're at three.
But I, I know, I know the point you're trying to make is there are things that we can do outside the office and not in. I don't want to get too deep in the weeds as far as Jeff and Katie's management of that department, but I, I think Jeff is asking permission for him to make some administrative decisions.
We can do that.
That are outside of the.
I hear that, but I.
Policy manual, but, but he hasn't made all of those decisions yet, and the phone call tomorrow could be something entirely different that would promote that position even, even further. If, if you're, why don't we do this? Why don't, why don't we vote on what Jeff has asked for and then continue the discussion on some ideas that he has with regard to that?
I'm in support of what he's asked for, so that's not the issue. What I also heard him say just a minute ago though is, I said, it's about what's essential and not essential, and he said, and that's the difficult part. So what I was trying to do was give direction as an elected person as to what I think is essential and not essential. And so I'm fine with approving that municipal order and moving on, but.
I'm, I'm comfortable with making the essential versus non-essential decision along with my senior managers in the morning after we discuss details. But, but there, there are going to be some winners and losers.
Every, every day.
And everybody's going to have to understand that, and everybody's not going to have to go along with and, and trust what we're doing and, and, and not complain and gripe and, and that sort of thing. So I'm comfortable with making that decision.
Brent, you hear that? Okay.
With, with the, with the help and advice of my, my counsel, which are my senior managers, which I trust wholeheartedly because they're on the, they know what goes on in their department. Brent knows what he needs and, and, and everybody else and Katie. And we do have capabilities. We're not in the, in the dark times. We have capabilities to, to do stuff online and Brent, I think, can take some stuff online with building. And so my whole intent here was not to shut, have a government shutdown. My, my intent with this is to give me some flexibility to work around the abnormality, is that a word, of, of the, the times we're in. So I would like a little more direction on what you want me to do as far as leave time goes.
I don't believe that sick time, personal time, or vacation time should be used as the result of a national emergency. I just don't. If that means that we as the city and as the taxpayers have to eat some of it, then we have to eat some of it. I'm willing to stand before the voters and, and explain my position and take both the praise and/or the criticism that comes along with that. So if that's the kind of direction you're looking for, I don't believe that that's what that time, I don't think when that time was designed, anybody thought about a pandemic.
So when one of our employees comes to a supervisor and says, my wife has been tested positive, me and my whole family have to stay quarantined for the next 14 days, that employee you're saying should get?
Should work from home and receive normal payday.
Okay.
And I agree.
There's three.
I don't disagree.
But if they can't work from home, it's still, is getting paid.
If they can.
There's, you can change people's typical duties so they may not be able to do their original job description, but they can do something for the city of Bowling Green from home. And I think in this time, we have to be that.
I think most people can get to their email, that sort of thing from home, but we do have this thing called VPN where a lot of our employees can log into our desktop system and be sitting at home and have their desktop like they would at, at their desk at work right in front of them at home. I have that capability on my personal laptop at home. Lynn has been working on some laptops, getting them together for people that don't have that and getting that in place. So we already have been working on a lot of this stuff, but like I said, I, I'm not asking for a shutdown. I'm just asking for some direction on these other things.
If I said something tonight that made it sound like I was asking for a shutdown, then I didn't explain my first position clearly, which was all non-essential employees are to stop working beginning tomorrow, which implies that essential employees are working tomorrow.
I thought you said we were going to close the buildings.
We are going to close, if I wasn't clear about that, we're going to close the buildings to the outside public, that the only people who would be working inside city government buildings would be city employees. And if that makes us be creative by, we start taking payments through the mailbox and we have an essential employee who walks out to that mailbox and collects that and turns that over to the next employee who processes it, who turns it to the third who makes the deposit, that's fine with me.
I thought you said we were closing up for two weeks. I misunderstood what you were saying.
I have said that if, if, if necessary, I'm prepared to shut the doors for two weeks.
If it comes to that, I think we all are. But I, when I look at, look at, for example, across the street, they, where they took the tent down, they're, they're using the window.
Sure.
To do the, the payments at the clerk's office so they don't come inside the building, but they don't have the same setup and protections that we have.
I left out the word, all city buildings are closed to the public beginning today. If that left somebody confused on, I'm sorry, that wasn't the intent.
I think the discussion ended up in that way.
Let me make, can I make an attempt at wrapping, wrapping, packaging some of this together?
Sure.
So Commissioner Nash, you're saying i, if we can close all face-to-face contact off with the general public, whether that be locking the front doors and, and putting a sign up on the front door, said, call this number if you need such and such, we can do that. If we do that, then I really don't see the need in sending people home if we're locking everybody in a building and we're around the same people every day unless they get sick.
So here's the, here's the tricky part of that.
So that's where I'm a little.
Four or five days ago, I would have agreed with you. Today, after my conversation with Dr. Shadoen, I mean, I asked her a very specific question. If a city employee is going home and taking care of someone who then later shows symptoms, should that employee come to work? And the answer to that is, no.
Already knew that.
Okay. So the other thing that was said, I didn't ask the specific question, but I believe the gentleman was from the community and technical college asked today about his question. Her answer to his question is, you should assume you have the coronavirus if you're showing symptoms. So bringing non-essential people in and out of the building is, isn't taking it to the degree that I would like to see. Is that better than what we're doing now? Yes. But that's not what I want to get to. I, 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 I don't want to see happening in Bowling Green what's happening in other places. Might have been just a word, but that's not hyperbole for me. That's, that's the real goal. And if it took, if in my opinion, it required a shutdown for two weeks so that we could make another plan during those two weeks, is what we're going to do? I, I both, I can live with that. I believe the voters can live with that. And what I've heard from our finance person is that we can survive that. Is it what we want to do? And I just want to do any of this. I wish we were arguing over other things, but we're, this is, this is the hand we're dealt.
The, one other thing I would add to that is in terms of, oh, if we're shutting it down to the public, then no one should have to work from home. I think the extraordinary thing that's happening to our employees that is not their fault is that because of this pandemic, all the schools have shut down, the parents didn't ask for the schools to be shut down. It's not something that they're responsible for that happening. And so they are being put in situations where they may or may not have childcare available to them, they may not have family close by, and so then they would have to take leave time in order to take care of their kids because there is no childcare, there's about to be no daycare, right? So because of this extraordinary situation, I think we have to be extraordinarily flexible with our employees. And even if our doors are closed to the public, that we allow our employees to work from home because this just puts, it changes everything. It's not forever, but it's for right now. And so I think we have to be flexible in thinking about all the ways that the pandemic is impacting our employees and that we need to try to mitigate that negative, negative impact as much as possible.
I don't agree, don't disagree with any of that. I think the point is, is that Jeff is asking for him to work with his very capable senior staff to make all of that happen. He's just asking for the latitude, and, and he should have it, in my opinion. He should have asked probably earlier, maybe, if there was anything, but he needs the latitude to be able to make all those decisions, and, and they know way better, way better than us. We don't, I don't work in finance. I don't work in Parks and Rec. I don't work in the attorney's office. I don't know all the ins and outs and the day-to-day necessities that they have.
Our people.
They know.
Our people, our people know if they have a fever, they are not to come to work. If their family member has a fever, they don't need to come to work. So I'm, if we haven't made that clear already, we're going to, so. But I know that's, that's waiting until, I know you're, I know you're.
Why would we bring people in if, if, granted, they're needed on an everyday basis, and I get that. And so things are going to slow down and things are going to be delayed and, but why would we bring people in and spread a pandemic? So that we can say, well, we've shut the door to the public, but we still have all the people, all the employees, and they're mingling amongst one another. Why, why, why take that chance?
Slim, can I make a comment? I, I thought I heard from Katie's very brief presentation that they were already identifying who is not a necessary person, you know, essential is what we call them. They're all necessary. I didn't mean to use that word. This is in the short run. Who's non-essential and identifying those folks and altering or limiting their, did I not hear that? Is it?
I'm confident you heard it because I heard it. Then I heard him say, if the public is being kept out of the building, then all the employee, there's no reason for anybody to work from home. So I'm, I'm responding to the dialogue as it's happening and.
I just, I, I guess I've, I understood.
I, I understand what you're saying. I'm just, I'm.
It's a lot to process here for everybody.
I think so, part of why I'm speaking up is that I think it's important that there not be assumptions about how the city commissioners as a body feel about how we should respond. And so I, I think the reason we're having this conversation is so that there's not an assumption that we feel a certain way, but actually, we would be very supportive. But maybe there's an assumption that we wouldn't, we, we want to keep every department open and don't shut any door. I think it's important for Jeff to know what a majority of the commissioners feel in terms of the direction that we want to go. And so I think that's the purpose of this direction. It's not because we don't trust our department heads. We know that we have an incredible staff. That's why we are, we're wanting to support you all as much as possible in those decisions if, if you want to act swiftly and generously in terms of how we're going to respond. And I think that's the purpose of this conversation is so that there's clarity around where the majority of board members stand on this direction we should go.
Okay, well, I think we're, let's, let's go ahead and vote on this, and then we'll continue the discussion on, on guidance on, on city operations, so.
I'll make the motion.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah. That we're going to continue to talk about everything, but he's going to have the freedom to do what he needs to do.
Mine's a process question. Is it necessary to have a vote of the city commission in order for personal time, sick time, and vacation time not to be used? I'm not prepared to vote on anything unless we come, unless we give the city manager clear direction on who loses and doesn't.
It's, it's the purpose of the consensus at the end. He's going to have the freedom. This is kind of a generic municipal order to give him the freedom to make the decisions he needs to make, and then we'll follow up with some consensus ideas about what he can do.
You're authorizing me to implement interim policies and procedures which may differ from the current Administrative Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual, which includes leave time.
Fair enough. I heard three people, so I hope you heard three people, say that they don't want employees to lose sick, vacation, or personal time.
I think, I think you heard five people.
Okay.
I wasn't.
I didn't hear anybody.
Let's, let's go ahead and vote. So call a roll on the things.
I didn't hear five people.
Go ahead and call a roll.
Ericson?
Yes.
Eastly Brown?
Yes.
Denning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Now, you're going to have the freedom. Now, we're going to talk about some ideas that, or solidify some of the ideas that we've, we've discussed. One is, are we closing the building to all outside people? I'm saying no. But it's not an official vote.
I think it depends on which, which building you're closing. Can we close City Hall right here, this building? Absolutely. Sure. Can you, can, I, I really like what they're doing across the street where you can access a permit or your driver's license. I don't know what all they do over there. You know, we can buy a car and get it registered, those kinds of things that goes on that.
They're not doing any of that from inside the building?
No, no.
But they're, but they're still doing it.
Right.
But the building is closed. That's what I asked.
The building is closed to people.
Yeah, but they have, the reason it's closed is they do not have the glass partitions that we have. And the discussion, when I went to their, can't, Jeff and I ended up at their department head meeting or elected officials meeting or whoever they were, they talked about that they're constructing the partitions so that they can operate how the city had participated. That was, that was all of that. And right now, the only thing, the only way they can think of is to put up a tent in case of rain and open a window and hand.
They're handing it out through a window.
But that doesn't change your.
There is no city.
Glass partitions help, in my opinion. They don't eliminate what I'm trying to eliminate.
What?
Because there's holes, you know? I, I realize there's holes on windows, but I, I just don't see the necessity of it.
If you had a comment? Oh, I'm sorry. All right, so I'm, I'm for keeping it open, but making sure that we don't have the human contact and that people stay behind the windows.
But he has the option based on what, what we have given him. If he comes to the conclusion that he needs to close this front door, he don't, don't have to tell us.
He can do it.
Right.
We're, we're, we're giving the, the.
But he's looking, you know, Slim's wanting us to tell him to close the building now, and that's what the direction I'm trying to get for him. and that's what the direction I'm trying to get for him, so he'll know.
For my opinion, I would like us to be as, act as swiftly as possible and be as cautious as possible, so act with the guidelines from the federal, state, and local level saying, here's how swiftly and, I guess, how far we think you should go. I think they're asking us to do as much as we possibly can to slow the spread of this virus and to do that and be as flexible as possible and creative as possible how we're going to do that. So, my, I guess, request to all the department heads is to figure out how can we act as swiftly as possible and extreme, extreme as possible in terms of, with the directions that are coming down for us about how, how they want to do the social distancing at this point. I don't want us to, okay, how can we do as little as possible? I would rather us talk about how can we make sure we are doing exactly what is being asked of us by the federal, state, and local levels, which is pretty extreme right now. And what I feel like I'm hearing is, well, we don't feel like we need to be as extreme as we have been asked to be, because we are the city government, and so, we really shouldn't do it if we don't have to. And what I'm saying, my perspective is, we need to act as swiftly, urgently, and as severely as we need to, and has been requested of us by our federal, state, and local public health professionals.
We'll mention in federal news conference today, there was an encouragement to keep as much business going as possible with the caveats that you explained there.
That's, yeah. And we've all been on the calls locally.
They didn't want to shut the country down, and if it comes to that, I think we're all on board, but that's not what was requested at the federal level.
The governor today asked that all buildings and sites providing state government services except for Kentucky State Parks shall be closed to the public except in an emergency or life-threatening circumstances, or to provide food, water, and medical assistance.
Dan, I don't think they have the setups that we have.
And what I'm just saying is that, I understand you're saying, I don't think we have to do what's being requested, and I'm saying, I feel like we do. Whether we have the partitions or not, I think we should, to act on the side of caution.
So, you want to close the buildings?
I'm saying we should, whatever is being directed down to us from the top officials, we should respond and with what they're asking us to do for at least the next 10 days. So, I'm not saying do this forever, I'm saying, if it's, they're asking us to do it, we should do it.
That mean you want to close the building?
Whatever was just asked of us to do, then that's what I, I don't either. So, he would need to read that again.
Well, I heard what he said, but he's talking about, if you've been to federal buildings, I mean, the state buildings, you know that they're just offices, and they don't have the partitions and barriers that we have that protect people from the.
But we are not even as a body, the Kentucky League of Cities has requested that we move into teleconferencing so that all of us would be having this meeting right now, each of us in our own home, and broadcasting that. They don't even want, the suggestion is that even our work together here is not as important as keeping the public safe, and we all do that by being extreme as possible and getting as far away from each other as possible right now.
You want to close, close up then, and make sure I understand.
I restate the question. City buildings, city-owned buildings will close to the public today.
That's what I understood. Is that what you want to do?
I think that what we have talked about is closing them to the public in terms of a physical walking into it. That doesn't mean we shut down being able to talk on the phone, being able to reach us online, being able to email. I'm saying the buildings themselves, yes, shutting down city, the city businesses closed, no. I'm saying redirect how we go about it.
I got, did you have an opinion on?
I, my opinion is that, that Jeff, with his senior leadership, needs to decide what it is that is absolutely essential that we have to provide here. We can't ask police officers to stay home. We can't ask them not to be out in the public. We can't ask a firefighter not to.
I don't think that would ever be, yeah, I don't think that would ever be requested. That's a non, yeah, I can't imagine that ever being asked.
That's hyperbole. That would be hyperbole, that would be the.
Well, I'm just saying that there's always going to be, we can't ask people to stay home and not go buy groceries, or go to the pharmacy and get their, their pills filled.
I'm not asking that of anybody.
No.
Well, there may come a time when the government asks us to do.
There may.
But we're not right now.
But we're not right now. That's not the, we're having a conversation about how we do city business.
Again, my personal opinion, and this is my humble personal opinion, is that I don't, I think Jeff and his senior staff need to lay out a plan and let us see that plan.
I would love that, that would be great.
Right now, the plan, the fact that, the ability to implement a plan has just been granted, because he didn't have the ability to do that 10 minutes ago. We just gave them the ability to do the job that we're asking them to do, which is to come up with a plan to keep limited services going that are probably essential to keeping our, what little bit of economy we have left going. And money's coming in, so if this is, if this is the long haul, you know, we do have some revenue to pay people and to, and to allow them to stay home and, you know.
But we don't have to make a long-term decision right now. We can make a decision right now about what we're going to do for the next 10 days.
That's, that's my opinion, is that I think that we need to allow them to come up with what they see as the best plan possible, and let us look at it. If we have to have a special call meeting to come and, and look at it, great.
I think we've granted him the authority to make that decision with our vote here tonight, but he's looking for guidance, and Joe, I haven't heard from you, so.
Including how we go about stopping foot traffic. That's the key.
You're with?
Yeah, yeah, I agree. The key is stopping foot traffic, and how do we do that? Do we lock the doors, or do we only have the annex open? I want the employees to be safe. How do we do it?
I don't know that if, if Slim's, we gotta close the buildings, I'm not hearing that from everybody. I'm hearing from Joe, I'm thinking, we need to lean towards that way, but let Jeff make the decision about what he's doing. I'm hearing from Dana.
I see what.
No, and I'm hearing from Sue, let Jeff make that decision. Am I?
I'm here, same thing.
Okay. So, you got your direction there. You make the call when you're ready to make the call, but you'll have support when you get ready to close the building, when that time comes, after you talk to your managers and staff and what you can do. Okay? All right, now, let's move to the next thing, which was, was using.
I'll go back up to number one, because that was, that was number four. All nonessential employees are to stop reporting to work today.
Well, that goes back to his plan. He's got to work with the manager to figure out who is and who isn't, what they're gonna do, and how, and so forth.
So, that would cover then, number two, which was essential employees will continue reporting to work.
So, how do you want to, let's go to, how do you want to pay those nonessential employees that we tell, that we say don't come to work?
So, people, I guess, telecommuting and working from home is not a new thing. This pandemic is a new thing we haven't experienced, but there's lots of resources out there about how to manage people at home, how to, in fact, there's a whole bunch that have just come out online about guidance, about how do you manage people if they're working remotely? So, I have no doubt that with the quality supervisors that we have now, that they can adapt to this new situation of, how do you make sure people are working from home? I think there's plenty of resources to be able to do that.
Okay, well, that's for him to, can, based on that, you've got to call the ability, the authority to make that decision, and we're gonna back it up. You can hear it from there. Next one was, of course, we're all gonna report to exposures, like you said, but the other thing was how to use leave time, and Slim's suggestion is that if you have the coronavirus.
Or you're caring for someone who has.
Family member in your household does, that you be considered as emergency leave and not count against sick, vacation, or personal days.
I agree with that.
That's, is that everybody on board with that?
But also, if you are, if you would have to take leave for whatever reason, even if it's because you would now have to take care of your children, that doesn't mean you're sick or someone else is sick. But if you have to stay home and take care of your children, you're not choosing that because you just want to go take care of your children, you're only doing that because this pandemic is happening. So, for me, if you have to stay at home because of what the pandemic has required of our community, that qualifies.
I'm not sure that I agree with you, but he's, he's working on some ideas other than that before we get to that step. I think you've got direction on emergency leave with regard to coronavirus illnesses, being off and being paid to take care of your children. I think he's got an idea that he's working on with some department heads that he may end up coming back and pulling this on, on email about, but he's, he's working on some ideas there.
But there are, the children are already out of school, so our parents need to be able to be at home with their children tomorrow. So, I, when is, what's the timeline for that? Because parents need to know.
I can't do it overnight.
But I thought earlier, the three of us said, we don't want any parent to be penalized with personal time if they have to stay home. I heard the three of us say that.
We're talking about the illness, but.
No, we were talking about parental leave.
No. Let me, let me finish my statement. What we're talking about was the illness is what we had decided on. Now, there was some discussion about that, but I'm not in favor of using emergency leave time for childcare pending the ideas and operations that, that he's able to come up with.
What I was talking about when we had a consensus of three, I said, I don't want any employee to be penalized related to sick, vacation, or personal time as a result of the coronavirus.
Which would mean school is out, school is out, and the kids are home.
That's right.
The kids wouldn't be home.
If it wasn't for the coronavirus.
If it wasn't for the problem we having, and I do not have a problem in that person being paid, none whatsoever.
With the emergency.
Aren't they gonna be working from home for the most part?
Yeah, I mean, if they're, we're not.
They're gonna be paid.
Yeah.
What we're talking about is the employees that aren't, the, the.
Can't work from home.
The guy who, who rides a lawnmower, if that's determined nonessential, and he's sent home, parks is already closed. So, there are, there are employees right now from parks, pardon me? Outdoors open, indoor parks are closed. If you're, if you're in, if you're an indoor parks employee right now, and you were determined nonessential, and you're home, you would be paid.
You're saying only nonessential people get to keep, keep their kids?
No.
I'm, I'm lost then.
Well, it's. Sometimes I wonder, Mayor, you know, I want to be super respectful, but sometimes it's, sometimes I think it's made more difficult intentionally. That's what I believe. We will determine who is essential and nonessential. What we will determine is essential and nonessential is a job, not a person. Okay? Now, there are some jobs, we only have one CFO, and we only have one city manager, although the city manager goes out of town and has vacation, and appoints other people to be the city manager. So, it's the job. So, even on essential people, we can rotate those people around so that it's not, oh, we're penalizing this employee over this employee. It's not all what I'm talking about. And, and, and I'm not gonna be backed into a corner that way either.
I didn't say that. I'm, I'm lost because you said, you, you get to stay home if your kids don't have anywhere to go. Is it for essential, or is it everybody?
I believe that we identify, okay, I'll go through the steps. I believe we identify the essential positions, and we plug people into those. We start with them. And then, if that employee comes up and says, hey, I want to be here, if I can work from home, I'll work from home, but I'm essential, and I gotta be here, but I have nobody to take care of my kids, then somebody looks for somebody else to fulfill that role. And if somebody says, let's say, an employee says, hey, my mother-in-law takes care of my kids every day, so daycare's not an issue for me, then that employee would come in. It's, 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 it's the time that we pull together. This is the time we pull together. This is the time where, when we, we all wave our American flag and say we're Americans, it's time to be that. And so, there will be people who Joe suggested rotating on essential services. So, there is a way to work this out, but you still, your face tells me I still haven't answered your question.
No, I hadn't, hadn't got anywhere near that. We got 125 police officers, 125 firefighters, we got.
Yeah, and, and those are always going to be essential services.
Okay, do they get to go home or not, and stay home with the kids?
If, if we can manage that in essential services, yes, they would be able to go home.
Okay, define manage that. See, that's what we're, we're laying on him to do.
That's why we're talking about it here, is so we don't lay it on him. I'm not suggesting that we don't have a police force anymore.
No, I didn't. There we go, hyperbole again. That's what I'm saying. And I'm not un-American because I want people to work and find childcare on their own.
I'm saying it's time that we pull together. This is it.
I understand, and he's looking for guidance, and that's what we're working through.
If we, if that means we, yeah, go ahead.
But if there's a way that he can make those determinations, he needs to know that he has support for what he's doing. And we're gonna support his, his, his work. Did you need something?
Can I just?
Yeah, I think, let me, let me finish my statement. But it, where, where does that end? Who, who gets to go home? You know, does the person, you know, the details are so, everybody wants to take care of their employees, that's not the point. Everybody's in a bad situation, whether you work for the city or, or not. You know, we're gonna shift our costs, if we keep paying people, onto the, to the taxpayer. That's just part of, of what we do, if we're gonna continue to pay people who, who aren't getting the job that we've hired them to do done. And that's okay if we have some, some clear guidance, and I'm, I'm afraid that, I want to hear from Jeff after he talks with his people about what ideas and plans he has, because I, I think he's more into the details and weeds than we are, rather than us, you know, maybe give him a little bit too much information, let him work through the details, and then, then I think he can.
One thing I want to clear, just follow up with you, is that I know our community is coming together to figure out how to provide childcare for frontline workers. So, I feel like we can remove that sort of extreme scenario from the equation.
That's one of the things we're working on.
So, that, I think, when we're talking about, we can't just let everybody go home to take care of their kids, because what about the police officers and firefighters? We, the community knows that they can't stop working, so we're figuring that out as a community about how they're still gonna have access to childcare. So, I think we need to focus the conversation around, it's, we're probably talking about people, people's jobs who no one's gonna die if they don't come in. So, I think that we just need to focus it in on. We're focusing on jobs that no one's going to die or get hurt if they don't come in. Because we, our community is coming together to figure out the childcare for people who are the frontline workers.
That's, that's what is, that's what his plan is, and there may be an opportunity to do that beyond as well.
Okay, so, if we get to that situation where dual-working families, both spouses work, let's say one is in the medical field and has to go in and work, and the other one works for the city, and they have no options on childcare, I've got, I think, three that say, three of you that, that would want to let that employee stay home and get paid with the emergency COVID-19 excuse.
Yes, and starting tomorrow, yeah.
Okay. Did you need something from us?
But Jeff has said.
But I'm, I'm still gonna keep, keep, keep the city running and keep services provided and keep, keep, keep the engine running with whoever I got. If people don't have kids, they're gonna be.
Taking advantage of them, but that's just part of life right now.
That's just part of it.
You're saying you are.
Like I said, there's gonna be winners and losers, so.
Did you need something, Karen?
We'll work around it.
Wants to ask a question.
I can't hear you.
Come to mine.
She wants to ask a question.
I'm not on the clock, just so you know. I'm Karen. I do have a question that hasn't really been touched. really been touched on yet. I am an employee, and I know that I have friends across all our different departments, and we are all impacted in different ways. One category of employee that we have not addressed, aside from parents, or someone who is directly sick or been exposed, are employees in our workforce, who you can tick the boxes, are employees that are the ones in those high-risk categories. So I know there's been a lot of discussion about essential and non-essential jobs, but there are also levels of impacts for employees, and that has not been addressed. I, I would think if someone is in that category of being a high-risk, in that high-risk category, they shouldn't be expected to continue to come to work and expose themselves, whether they're at a non-essential or essential employee. So I, I just wanted to, to make that, because I sense that you all are trying to come to a consensus here in giving Jeff direction, and I just thought this might be my only opportunity to put that out there, so.
I don't quite, Karen, I don't quite understand what you're saying.
Okay, so, for example...
She's saying you're old, Joe, and you don't have to come to work.
Remember how you said that you were someone who's in the category of being high-risk? In theory, you should be self-isolating at home, instead of being here. We have employees in our workforce who also meet that criteria, either by age, or because they have another pre-existing condition, and that is not something that would be covered under the leave, as you all have talked about it so far.
Karen, yeah, I think, I think it actually was, only, only because in this way, to Slim's point, we're not, we're not talking about individuals here, we're talking about roles. And, and as these guys work through this whole thing, I would imagine that if you have a high-risk employee in a specific role, you would shift somebody that might not be a high-risk into that role temporarily, so that that at-risk person would be non-essential. You see what I'm saying? I think, I think it has been talked about, not specifically, so thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, you know, we, we got to, we got to be mindful of, of, we have folks that work here that have pre-existing, but they may be young and have a condition that's considered at-risk, diabetes, or, you know, any number of things that have been outlined. But I, I do think that that really has sort of been, you know, I would imagine that would be consideration of the senior staff as they look across their departments, of who, who do we need coming here and who do we not? Not just, not just the, not the, not the person, but the role. Does that make sense?
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So you had mentioned that you're going to work to keep the government running, and the doors open, which is obviously can be a metaphor. So I just want to check, does that mean you've already made your mind up that you're not going to close any physical buildings? Because when I think, keep the city running, you can do that remotely, on the phone, over email, online. I just want to clarify, did you, does that mean you've already made your decision, you're not closing any buildings?
I think I understood you all wanted me to close it off to the public, starting tomorrow.
That wasn't what the consensus was. There were two that wanted it closed, and three of us that said, after you make a determination with, with regard to staff and their managing contact, that if you felt it necessary, and of course, as things change, yeah, we can do that.
You may wake up tomorrow and...
But I would add one more level, that Joe was leaning towards, I want you to close as many as possible. So you might be less than that, but I want to say that Joe was not, I wasn't hearing him on the same level as you. I heard him, close as many as possible and reduce as much foot traffic as possible. So I think that's a different sort of response than...
Y'all not agree with that?
Keep them all open. Yeah.
And the key to these here on this list, it says, foot traffic, not, I don't know whether the front door is closed or not, but some doors are closed.
Is Frankfurt on your list?
Yeah.
Frankfurt has all city-owned buildings closed to the public.
Have you been to their city building? It does not have the protections that we do.
The protections that we have are to stop a bullet.
Stop everything in between there. There's still air that comes through, I understand that, but the protection is, there's no personal contact.
The glass is better than no glass. I'm not arguing that. And, and to Joe's credit, that he, he, he had the foresight to argue for that in the past.
Fifty-five thousand dollars.
I think, I think we've already given him...
That's not the same as, I mean, anytime I mention a building, whether it's a state building, or whether I mention Frankfurt, you're quick to say, but they don't have what we have.
Correct.
Well, but we don't have what prevents the virus either.
Henderson's closed, Hopkinsville, well, I got the whole list. I was trying to get to larger cities.
No, Jeff, he's, he's not going to have, from direction from the commission, they're not going to have person-to-person contact with anything, but there may be people who come in and provide their payments, or file their forms, or whatever, even though some of them can do it online.
If we're going to get, if, I feel like if, if we were to get infected, it would be internally. Somebody would carry it in from their family, or...
We have no way of knowing. It could be anyone at any time, right?
That's exactly right.
So that's why we have to be as, act as swiftly as possible to be as isolated as possible, because it's, it's, we don't know.
I just don't know, of, of all the medical professionals that I've been listening to, I don't know, I mean, if we really kind of go down to the science on this issue, I don't know how you can say, if we're to be infected, if we're to be infected, it's likely to happen internally. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know how you, I don't know how you can say that.
I think he's probably talking about the closeness of the people in different sections of the office.
I'm saying, because we have, if we, if we shut off all face-to-face personal contact with the, with the outside public, and we, we can, we can, there's no open space in these glasses at all. I mean, it's, it would have to curve, and nobody can sneeze or cough in anybody's face at, at any of these windows, to my knowledge.
Finance doesn't have, I mean, I paid my taxes the other day.
It's not a direct opening.
I slipped it underneath a window.
It's, it's not a direct opening, but anyway. We won't, I won't argue with that.
Well, what, what we need to do at this point, I think, unless there's another issue that we need to go to, I think Jeff has enough direction to work with his staff and come up with his plan, all of which we're going to support until the next directive comes down, and we have to back up and punt. I will ask you, and Jeff won't ask you, but I will ask you, please allow him the time to, to deal with this. He's, he is absolutely overwhelmed with everything that's been thrown at his plate, and I don't, and I'm not diminishing the, the cow thing, the cow mural, because it's going to go away, but he needs to address this right now. And if y'all would be kind enough to grant him the courtesy to work on this, and he'll present his plan back to us.
It's budget meeting week two.
Yeah, budget's going on as well. So, so, thank y'all. Appreciate the, the conversation.
Thank you for your input. I really appreciate it.
And we'll, we'll go from there. Any other comments? We'll close the meeting. Thank y'all for tuning in.